The City Council Work Session, April 21st, 2021. And so I will turn it over to Claudia to do a roll call. Go ahead, Claudia.
Counselor Garvin.
President.
Counselor Geary.
Present.
Counselor Minkie.
Present.
Counselor Chinowith.
President accounted for.
Counselor Peralta said he should be in within about 15 to 20 minutes. Counsel President Drabkin. And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia. This evening, we have two topics that we're going to be going over in our presentations this evening. But I think before we get started, I think Deputy Chief Hanifin is on the line to update us with the Organic Valley fire of yesterday and give us an opportunity to kind of hear the latest on that. And I know Chief Skels, I saw him on the line. So if Chief, if you want to give some insights into that. So Amy, I'll turn it over to you initially.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Thank you. Just to update everyone, we were called out yesterday afternoon right before 1:30 and ended up going third alarm on an industrial structure fire at the Organic Valley Creamery. As many of you may feel aware, we did have to do some evacuations within a quarter to half mile of the area due to anhydrous ammonia, which was a concern of chemical release with fire involved. We did have over 10 departments that responded and assisted. We had Walton Valley's hazardous materials team. Both units initially responded down and worked fairly closely with them. We did have four different aerial ladder trucks essentially that had elevated streams on the fire and worked for, gosh, at least nine hours into the evening with a good amount of our partners and then had crews there all throughout the night. Fire investigation is still continuing at this time.
Thank you. Any, any questions for Deputy Chief Hanifin? Go ahead, Zach.
Is there any understanding of the, not necessarily the structures fate, but the sort of fallout to the city's systems of such a heavy user? I think the wastewater and how they were so tapped in as such a heavy user, an event such as that, it just sort of literally all comes crashing down in the most chaotic of ways. Do we have a full assessment or understanding of how that's affecting our, I guess specifically wastewater, but any of those other ways in which the city system was hooked up to them?
Yeah, sure. I mean, there certainly were some concerns and we talked about that throughout the scene. They, their basin did overflow and we used a heavy amount of water. We did get to a point where our usage of water was noticeable in that our, our water, our ability to get water out of the hydrants we were using was kind of decreasing just because of the way that the grid works in that area. But we were able to mitigate and use a hydrant off of one of the neighboring hydrants there that wasn't on the same flow of grid there. So yeah, it definitely has some impacts and a fire of that caliber, no matter the jurisdiction is, is going to have some heavy impacts on those systems.
Zach, I can give you just an insight because we were, had Mack Water and Light Commission meeting last night. This time of the year, prior to the fire, we were, we had a flow of about 1.3 million gallons for the day to the city. After the fire and they were going full bore with the fire, we went, we were, we had a usage rate of 9.3 million gallons of water.
It's just staggering.
Yeah, the thought. And they had to, you know, open and we had plenty of water, as you know, up in the reservoir, but we had to, we had to be very on top of making sure that we had plenty, the full amount of water, giving the kind of pressure we needed coming down to the city.
Yeah. And I know, well, eight, eight million gallons is huge. I know that even sometimes they have little issues with spills of tank overflow or something in the parking lot and it affects the Cozine. I know I've been coming through Shadowwood there. Do we know if that was impacted if at all by that eight million gallons just being flat on there?
There, there, go ahead.
Go ahead, Amy.
We knew that that would likely be in overflow. Someone else may have better feedback on.
So Amy, this is Jeff. I've got a little bit of information on that. Most of the, most of the water ended up going into the storm drain system and not the wastewater system. So there wasn't any significant impact on the plant per se. And at least what we, what we believe at this point is because of the high volume of water that was put into the system from the fire, that anything that did wash into the storm drain system was probably pretty significantly diluted. So as far as we know, nothing significant environmentally has happened downstream. We have had crews out doing some testing and making sure things are running right. We will probably learn more about all aspects of the incident as time goes on.
Copy that. Thanks.
Chief Skels, anything from your perspective, securing the location and the evacuation and the things that you would have been involved in?
You bear. I just wanted to know, I think that Counsel Chinowith has a hand up too. Am I, he might have a question for Chief Hanifin first.
Go ahead, Chris. I'm sorry I didn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff, for catching that. So yeah, first I just want to give a big shout out. Thank you. You, our, our fire department and our police department handled that spectacularly. It was, it was a great example of what we have here in McMinnville and I thank you and am very appreciative of all that was done. And I just wanted to, I don't really have a question per se. I just want to know if as more information is being made available about the fire, more details, things like what, what departments were involved? If, I assume there's going to be press releases and, and that kind of stuff that's going to happen? If we can make sure that the City Council is in the loop on that, we get those first so we can see what, what's coming out, I would be very appreciative.
Certainly. I can get a summary of some of that together and to Jeff in the morning.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for the, for Amy? Then let's go over to Chief Skels. Matt?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and members of the council. Mr. Towery asked me to hop on board, give a little police summary. First of all, I want to, as everybody sort of knows, the fire department did a tremendous job and probably in my 28 years here, I've never seen a fire that big here in Mack. They just did a tremendous job. But I'd also, our role specifically was traffic management and assisting with that evacuation. And again, some shout outs to Public Works, our Mac Public Works did a tremendous job of some arterial street shutdowns, ODOT on the highway. We did some initial traffic shutdowns, but once they came in, they were stellar and assisted. That's what I give shout outs to YCSO for their assist. YMPD even came down to assist. And then lastly, I think as important is the Yammell County Emergency Management. I know Amy's staff initially pushed out that Everbridge and I highly recommend those that are not on Everbridge to get on, get on board and assist because that was a tremendous help to our, to our officers. We initially were requested do a quarter mile south, then it was expanded to just a quarter mile radius around that. So we spent probably the better part of the entire operation, initial, initial response was getting into the neighborhoods and trying to get those folks within that quarter mile. And Wycon did a tremendous job of providing us with mapping that allowed us to get into those neighborhoods and one, get those people out and then two, ask people to shelter in place if they were in that half mile. And I think that was eventually what we ended up with. But you know, we had 12 staff, 12 to 13 staff from patrol detectives, school resource officers, and then obviously command staff. We did some, some press stuff that we're pushing out to help our citizens understand where they could and couldn't go. And then lastly, event management, just making sure that the looky-loos were kept as far away as possible. But by and large, our operation was probably the largest, again, I've been a part of as far as the evacuation of that, that sheer area was a tremendous accomplishment by our staff and great job by the fire department. And again, Yammell County Emergency Management and their Everbridge notification system both during that and then obviously when they posted that people could return, that was tremendous. I know I had some family that received notifications. If anybody had any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Thank you, Chief. Again, I just wanted to let the council know that last night at 5:00 PM, it was seven o'clock Central Time, I received a, an email from corporate Organic Valley and Lisa Hill, who is their PR director, they put out a statement and I won't read all of that to you, but they just wanted to thank, we are working to support all of our employees, the first responders or families in the community of McMinnville. Everyone at, at the co-op is ready to help. We are thankful that there were no reported injuries and we are working to ensure the safety of our employees and the surrounding community. The extent of damage to that landmark creamery is unknown at this time and though investigations of the incidents will be conducted, we will not speculate on the origin of the fire. We thank the actions of the local emergency personnel and we are complying fully with the local authorities. And so I reached out to Lisa again this morning. My understanding is the staff of 15 have located to a location here in McMinnville in, for temporarily and are looking for another place that they can work out until they can determine how and what they're going to be doing in McMinnville. So I thought I'd share that with you also. Jeff, anything else from your perspective as City Manager on the ordeal?
No, Mayor. Just want to give my thanks to all of the public safety and Public Works folks who were involved in the incident last night. We had a full crew out for a long time, as Deputy Chief Hanifin said.
Right. I went by this morning and they were still cleaning up and they had quite a crew there. So, okay. Thank you, everyone. This evening, we've got two topics and before we get going, I just want to recognize Counselor Peralta is on the line with us now, so we have a full form. This evening, our first.
Mayor, pardon me. Just Counsel President Drabkin has joined the meeting as well.
Okay. Remy, welcome. You're here. So we do have a full council now. Our first item of our topic this evening for our work session is municipal court presentation. And, and so we'll turn that over to Jennifer. I see that we have some of the staff from the municipal court here. So Jennifer, if you'd like to introduce those that will be participating in this discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, great. Well, thanks so much for, for tuning in. We're really excited to tell the story of municipal court. And part of the presentation will be going through introducing all the staff. We've got all these great pictures coming out of remote court that we'll be sharing with you in the presentation. And I just want to highlight in your packet, there are some accompanying reference materials, some great workups that have been done in the last three to six months about core services at the court, about our diversity, equity and inclusion work at the court, what the specific accomplishments have been in the last 12 months. And then there's also a best practices white paper about fines and fees that are an interesting read that are associated with the court and, and that the financial piece of things. So I will be kind of stepping back and I will be advancing the slides for the team. And so if I am falling behind, be sure to call out and I'm going to mute myself and let folks get started. So I believe the, the judge is going to kick us off. So here we go. Well, good evening. And I'm hoping that the court staff is here as well. I haven't seen them join us yet, but I'm hoping they'll pop on. Well, first of all, let's see if they're coming. There, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm Cynthia Kaufman Noble and I'm the Judicial Officer for the City of McMinnville Municipal Court and I serve at the pleasure of the City Council. The heart and soul of municipal court are the members of the team. And the municipal court is a separate branch of the city's government and we wanted to make sure that the council got a quick introduction to the municipal court staff. And so we're going to start with Abby Cohen. Abby, if you would please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, thank you, Your Honor, and hello, Mayor, Council members, and other participants here tonight. My name is Abby Cohen and I'm a court clerk here in the McMinnville Municipal Court. I was born in Dundee and all of my immediate family still lives here in Yammell County. My mom and dad had a chiropractic practice for nearly 40 years in Dundee and my dad was the mayor of Dundee for 10 years while I was growing up. My parents fostered in me and my siblings a passion for stewardship and public service. I graduated from Newburgh High School in 2010 and earned a bachelor's degree in 2014 from Western Oregon University with a major in music and a minor in business. The instrument I play is the trumpet and I'm pretty good. In school and college, I won several awards and scholarships. When there isn't a pandemic, I can be seen playing with the Newburgh Community Band, the McMinnville Community Band, and around the area in different events. I also teach trumpet lessons. After graduating college, I became a licensed real estate agent in 2015 and started working here in McMinnville. After two and a half years, I became a loan processor for a small mortgage company, also here in McMinnville. My favorite aspect of these roles was not interest rates or floor plans, but the law governing the real estate industry. Also in these roles, I gained experience working with clients' personal and sensitive information, as well as gaining insight into working in roles that have a fiduciary duty to others. In between these two careers, I began working for the City of McMinnville Parks and Recreation and continued to work there on evenings and weekends while I worked at the mortgage company. I didn't really need the money, but I was having so much fun and fulfilled being a public-facing employee representing the City of McMinnville. In May of 2019, I was laid off from the mortgage company and began looking for a different job. In 2020, still working in Parks and Rec, there was an opportunity in the McMinnville Municipal Court. I had been helping out one day per week for a couple of months and was enjoying the work. I applied, I did not get the job. However, another opportunity to apply came up and this time I was offered a position. After working in the court for seven months, I can say with confidence that my skills aligned well with the court. My strengths with technology have been put to good use in fine tuning forms and in brainstorming new procedures. Also, right after starting in this position, my new colleague and I attended Court 101, taught by her honor and our sick prosecutor. This two-day learning opportunity gave us insight into our court processes and solidified my passion for law. I mentioned briefly my new colleague. I will introduce him now, Mr. Freddie Vargas.
Oh, there we go. I apologize. Good evening, Mayor, City Council and other participants. Thank you very much for your time and taking the time to listen to our voices. My name is Luis Fernando Vargas Gutierrez. I know it's a mouthful. I'm Hispanic and it's my, it's my background. Or as everybody knows me here, Freddie Vargas. I'm married to my amazing husband Kyle, who works for Ad Ecology Western Oregon here in McMinnville. We live with our two doggos. One is a rescue named Posey. She's a Boston Terrier. And our newest puppy, she's a mini snouser named Evie. She's seven months old. In August, we plan to move to or near McMinnville. I'm from a small city in California called Woodland. I moved up to Salem, Oregon in February of 2019 to be closer to my parents. Before moving up to Oregon, I coached freshmen, junior varsity and varsity high school football over nine years. In the winter of 2012, I started working at Cash Creek Casino Resort as a food and beverage barback, then transferred to the slot operations where I quickly became a frontline staff member and into management, supervising 15 or 20 employees per shift, resolving guest service issues, verifying and confirming large monetary payouts and overseeing 2,200 slot machines. In March 2019, when I left, I continued my casino career here at Spirit Mountain and I left for a job at Mattress Firm, which meant working during the daytime and having weekends off. I was content working at Mattress Firm, but I was never truly happy, motivated, nor felt like I was making a difference in people's lives. In the fall of 2020, I saw an opportunity to join the City of McMinnville. As I mentioned, I've always had a passion for helping people and making a difference in someone's life. I've been a clerk since last September. My past experience in casino management has helped me tremendously with managing my time and paperwork as a clerk. I have been able to use my past experience and skill sets to provide excellent guest service and my ability to be fluent in both English and Spanish are a great way of helping all defendants have equal access to justice and assisting them navigate the court system. I'm not the only bilingual team member. Joining me with access to justice through the court are George and Christine Emile. City Prosecutor Miss Lee Erskine will now tell you more about them.
Hello, everyone. The Emiles were, are unable to be present, but they were very excited to give some information and some bio, bio, bio information about themselves. They are probably, they are definitely the longest-serving individuals on this team. They hail from California. George is a printer by trade and prior to coming to McMinnville, Christine was a translator in the hospital environment. Once they moved to Oregon, Christine had a career as a translator for the ESD migrant program and George had a 24-year career with the school district, handling purchasing and also helping the school district with any of their translation needs. They have been with the municipal court for almost 25 years. They wanted to express their thanks for having us present and also let you know that they really enjoy working with the court staff and community members. Thank you. Next up is our senior court clerk, Susanda Branson.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to do this presentation. Mayor, council members, City Manager Towery, we appreciate you listening to us as well. I started working in McMinnville as a single mom in October of 2004 at Chuck Colvin Auto Center as the warranty administrator, cashier supervisor, and fixed operations financial assistant. My very first home I purchased by myself was completed on January 14th of 2005. In 2007, I saw the job posting in the news register and although I had no legal background, I was ready for a change and applied for and was hired as the administrative assistant one position here at the municipal court. In 2010, I met and fell in love with my husband Eric, who just happened to be the court administrator, Sean Branson's brother-in-law. We have successfully graduated four kids from McMinnville High School, all of whom I am very, very proud of and all whom still have connections here in the community. I'm also, believe it or not, a grandma to three, soon to be four grandchildren. I began working for the city on April 1st of 2007. So I've begun my 15th year here with the city, was trained by Tony Bennett, Christine Watts and Sean Branson. From 2009 to 2012, I was a director with Oregon Association of Court Administrators and have worked under two judges. I was instrumental in streamlining the payment contracts with the court and how the days that they were being paid and how much were being paid on payments. I also worked with the team and spearheaded the 2010 and 2014 amnesty programs. And in 2013, I was instrumental in creating our reinstated payment agreement program to get licensed drivers, or excuse me, unlicensed drivers licensed, a program that's still in place today. I worked with Zach on the Yammell County Parks Board from 2014 till 2018, mostly as the tangle box liaison and had a really wonderful time with that. Initially, my role here at the city was more of an assistant with the other clerks. But in 2009, I moved into the courtroom setting and haven't left since. My function today as the senior court clerk is mostly in an administrative role, including dispositioning traffic, balancing daily deposits, month-end balancing for both court and parking and I'm newly involved with the budgeting of the court. When I first joined the team, we handled much more violations. However, over the years, I have seen a significant increase in the crime and the criminal cases that we are involved with. Next is our trial court administrator, Sean Branson. She's currently on leave, so our city prosecutor Shannon Lee Erskine and Judge Kaufman Noble will be giving a short bio for her.
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Branson will be completing the circle of her 22-year legal career in the legal field this summer when she will graduate with her bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Ms. Branson started off her education with associates and her paralegal certification. She has worked in both California and in Oregon in the private sector as well with, with criminal defense attorneys and civil attorneys, working on contracts, family law, personal injury, real estate, torts, wills and trusts, and of course, criminal law. Ms. Branson has been with the municipal court for over 16 years. She is currently serving as a director of the Oregon Association of Court Administrators and was the past 2019 president. Ms. Branson is expected to graduate this June with a hard-earned 3.77 GPA from Western Oregon University.
So I would be remiss if I didn't jump in here and tell you a little bit more about Sean Branson, our first trial court administrator, because I am very proud to say I'm one of five former city prosecutors to work with Sean. When the court started, crimes were not as voluminous as they are now. Just to explain that a little bit more, in 2007, when Susanda joined the court, we had about 400 misdemeanors filed. By 2018, we were in the high 700 to 800 misdemeanors filed and we've stayed about in that range even during the pandemic. Sean during that time wore several hats and one of the hats that she wore was really legal assistant to the city prosecutor's office. She coordinated all of the files from the PD, prepared them for the prosecutors. That meant that she also sent out victim statements and letters for restitution. In addition to that, she would handle all of the subpoenas for trial and have everything ready from a court paralegal. And at the same time, she was sitting in court as a judicial officer and she was really running the judicial supervisor of court operations, including handling all of the docket, scheduling all of the hearings and working with all of the defense attorneys for scheduling motions and jury trials. Around 2015 or 16, myself and the then sitting prosecutor, Aaron Paraselski, sat down with an interim city manager, Ms. Candace Haynes, and our former city attorney and explained that Sean was actually wearing four hats and that we needed to separate some of the functions of the court. And at that time, it was determined that the court really did need a trial court administrator and ultimately Sean became just that. If you talked to defense attorneys today and any of the former city prosecutors, they would tell you that Sean is the glue that holds McMinnville Municipal Court together. She manages both the administrative side and she manages in the courtroom on the judicial side and she does it very seamlessly. So we're very happy to take a moment and let you see a picture of Sean. Thanks, Shannon.
In 2014, McMinnville City Council put its first female judge on the bench, making Judge Cynthia Noble, Cynthia Kaufman Noble, the third female judge in Yammell County. The Honorable Cynthia Kaufman Noble, I'm happy to introduce her next.
Well, thank you, Shannon. So in this short bio, I will tell you that I'm originally from the East Coast. I have a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree from Syracuse University. My fun fact is that that is also our city manager Jeff Towery's alma mater for his masters. So go orange. And I graduated with a JD from Willamette University College. And I graduated with a JD from Willamette University College of Law. I was on what some have described as a very long maternity leave of about four years when Brad Berry and Cynthia Easterday, who was then the chief deputy, now she's the presiding judge of Yen Hill County, asked me to come in and assist on a murder trial. I believe Brad made me an office in a broom closet with a very long blackboard, which I covered with all kinds of diagrams that really disturbed Brad when he came in to see it one afternoon. But from there, Brad actually got me sent over to the city to work with Cliff Ross, our former city attorney, and I became the city prosecutor in May of 2000. And I served with two judges during that time through 2013. I also practiced defense work in addition to being a city prosecutor, which was a tremendous amount of fun and at times a challenge, family law, corporate law, and employment law. In 2014, I was appointed by the city council to succeed Judge Kevin Kenny. I've continued in private practice, although now I'm family law mediator, and I've limited my private practice to serving as a juvenile defense attorney. I work with a team of juvenile defenders known as the Yen Hill Juvenile Law Group. I also serve in tribal court as the chief judge for the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon. I'm a board member of the Yen Hill County Bar Association, and I serve as a board member with the Municipal Judges Association and work with the chief justice in the tribal court and state court forum. I live in McMinnville with my husband, who was a former sergeant for Carlton PD, and I might as well confess it, he did pull me over for a speeding ticket. That is how we met. In my defense, he alleges I was speeding. I was taking dogs to Carlton Vet for an emergency. We live in McMinnville. All the children are grown. We're grandparents of three gorgeous granddaughters, and we have a very moody Malamute at home and one bossy cat. So, that's me. And with that, we will go ahead and Shannon and I want to give a shout-out to the newest part of the team in McMinnville Municipal Court, and that's Megan Simmons. IS information technology is now a huge part of access to justice. You might call it a gift from COVID-19. Megan can't be here tonight, but we wanted to tell you that Megan and the IS team have been instrumental in McMinnville's McMinnville Municipal Court's success, both in developing and launching the virtual court, but in addition to running the court sessions. And that's really huge because other courts have not necessarily used IT, and that has at times caused problems with the fluidity of moving from one court appearance to another. So, not only is Megan available every day of the week for tech, she's particularly valuable on Wednesdays when court is in session because she's able to help with the technology issues that arise, and I want to tell you, they do arise. Working with technology is always a challenge because you never know what's going to happen with the internet and internet connectivity. And at this point, I can very confidently say to you that I believe the roles of justice and technology are intertwined. They have removed barriers and helped people with their access to justice, and I don't see that changing, and I don't think that it should. I think if we have the opportunity to remove barriers in order to help people participate in justice, that's a plus. So, I'm very excited that we have Megan with us. In addition to helping us in court, she's been able to improve the website. She's made it much more user-friendly. It's a work in progress. We now have a bilingual format. We have forms that are PDF fillable that are available for both our attorneys and our self-represented litigants. And in addition, I do want to say that Megan was helpful in posting resources during the wildfires that swept through Oregon in September as another opportunity to provide information to our community by the court, letting them know where to find support and resources, and to see our community court as a safe place that's invested in their well-being. Shannon, did I miss anything on Megan?
No, but she is actually present. I'm not going to make her say anything, but she is a valuable, while she's not officially staff on the, she's IS, she is an integral part of the success of virtual court. Absolutely.
Interestingly enough, Megan also worked with a judge and an attorney when she was 18 for a couple of years, and she took an elective in college in criminal justice. So, she is a wonderful fit in the courtroom. So, this is the time to talk to you a little bit about what truly has been the greatest accomplishment, but I want to tell you a little bit about the background of the court. McMinnville Municipal Court is created by the city charter and by state statute and also by city ordinance. It has jurisdiction over all crimes that occur within the city that are misdemeanors unless it's a designated drug-related misdemeanor, in which case we do not have jurisdiction over that. We have chosen not to have jurisdiction over criminal offenses that involve domestic violence because we do not have a dedicated crime victims assistance service available at this time. So, we have referred crime victims, crimes that involve domestic violence victims, to Circuit Court, where the district attorney's office does provide those services and can connect victims with resources in the community and also follow through with some of the other compensation that's available to victims. We are in a unique position handling both traffic violations and most misdemeanor crimes and code violations to see the needs of the community and to try to meet those needs in a way that's consistent with best practices. The community that comes before the court has changed dramatically since I joined the court and first began as a prosecutor. I think I already mentioned the increase in crimes, but it was also the change in the type of defendant that we saw entering the courtroom initially, and you would expect in a community court that you would have a first-time user, you would have someone who perhaps has a clean record and this is a first offense. And that has changed. The changes that we first saw began with the recession of 2007, 2008, when we saw, for example, property crimes change from thefts that might involve shoplifting to thefts that involve food, diapers, over-the-counter medications. And we knew then that we had to change in response to that and begin to direct our court users to services. And that really began the groundwork of responding to the needs of the community. That social service networking you'll hear throughout this presentation has become an integral part of who we are and what we do and part of our passion for justice in the community. In addition to that service need changing, we saw about 2012, a very different defendant. We began to see criminal histories of not first-time misdemeanor convictions, but convictions of multiple misdemeanors, multiple felonies, post-prison supervision. And it was in very short time that we realized we are now seeing the same population in Circuit Court in McMinnville Municipal Court, that population passing through the two courts in terms of criminal activity. It's interesting to note that the FBI does not consider McMinnville one of the safest places to live. That's, that's, that was something that surprised me, but it says that the crime rate in McMinnville is actually 68% higher than some of the other cities and towns of similar sizes. So, in order to prosecute the crimes, in order to get the crimes into court, adjudicate the crimes, and have disposition of the crimes so that people can be held accountable, victims can have some sense of restoration, but that we can also do the rehabilitative work that's needed in the community, it has been very labor-intensive. And we were anticipating coming to the city council within a short amount of time prior to COVID to actually ask to expand the number of days that court sat in session in order to meet that need. 2020 created a complete change of that paradigm. The need hasn't changed, but the access has changed. 2020, as you know, has been a challenge marked by closure and rest and lockdown of the pandemic in a community. And in response to that, our court has really buckled down to focus, how can we open doors? How can we remove barriers that are access to justice? And we want to describe the task of what happened and how we did it. And it's a really very unique journey because we were one of the first three courts to do it. So, with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to the court staff.
Thank you, Your Honor. We now provide services in both English and Spanish. Freddie Vargas is fluent in Spanish and is able to provide court services in Spanish in addition to the court sessions where municipal court interpreters are available. The website has been updated to include English and forms in English and Spanish as well.
Having a bilingual clerk on-site has been tremendously helpful because of the defendants who speak and understand only Spanish or minimal English. Having to speak to someone regarding legal matters sounds very daunting and scary for most regular people in a courtroom setting. In the past seven months that I've worked as a bilingual court clerk, there have been a small handful of defendants that have expressed their gratitude and appreciation for having access to justice, and they can understand and feel comfortable sharing their information and resolving their citation.
Moving on to court-appointed attorneys, the municipal court has expanded its indigent defense bar to handle municipal court-appointed cases. There are attorneys that are murder and felony qualified on our list, even though our court handles misdemeanor crimes.
The municipal court is always in action and it's always evolving. COVID-19 was a speed bump. It didn't shut us down. We were able to develop a virtual court while still maintaining essential core functions. What we did was something that this team is remarkably adept at doing. We pivoted, and we pivoted very quickly and rose to the challenge. In six weeks, the municipal court team developed and launched a virtual program, and that initial team was present before Freddie and Abby joined us, and that was Susanda Branson and Sean Branson, myself and Shannon. We worked very intensely for six weeks in order to meet with some of our sister courts and determine what was the best way to do it and how to do it. And Shannon, I'll go ahead and let you sort of lead the way on how we did that and found our platform.
Thank you. So, part of the process was research. We had to find a platform that was HIPAA compliant, but also compliant with the criminal justice information systems, laws and rules, and the platform also needed to have the ability for attorneys to have private conversations with their clients, for attorneys to have sidebars with either the judge and/or the city prosecutor. We also had to be concerned about issues of security. At that time, I don't know if you remember, about a year ago, there were issues with Zoom bombing, and so we wanted to make sure that that was not going to happen on our watch. So, there were a lot, there was a lot of moving parts and a lot of choices to be, or excuse me, things to be considered in the choice of platform. We collaborated and observed with Springfield, Beaverton, Newburgh, and Salem Municipal Courts, and after extensive consultation with our McMinnville IS team, we chose GoToMeeting as our platform.
Surprisingly enough, communicating with court participants increased in the new virtual world. Moving court dates and providing information on how to access virtual court, what used to be a face-to-face conversation turned into emails and phone calls back and forth asking for and receiving documentation and/or instruction on how to access technology. There was many barriers with technology, and staff has worked to remove those barriers, giving all access to justice. We needed several court orders to accommodate the new process in this pandemic environment.
Municipal court orders were a synthesis and balance of executive orders from the governor, chief supreme, chief justice Supreme Court orders, and Yen Hill County Circuit Court presiding judge orders. These orders outlined how the municipal court was going to continue to operate and keep court users and community members safe. Some of the judge orders, the orders that our judge drafted, included closing the court to members of the public and making court appearances virtual, as well as extending deadlines for both financial obligations and programming and community service compliance components for our court users.
On March 3rd, 2020, Governor declared a state of emergency. On March 23rd, the stay-at-home orders were enacted. On May 5th, the municipal court held its first dress rehearsal for the traffic court. On May 13th, the municipal court collaborated with indigent defense bar and had a dress rehearsal of virtual court for misdemeanor crime cases. And on May 20, 2020, the municipal court went live and held its first virtual court session.
And it was a great success. The McMinnville Municipal Court has gotten a number of kudos and accolades for how seamlessly that happened and how we were able to integrate the attorneys and the defendants and those who needed to participate in our virtual courtroom. It opened the door to community partnerships in ways that we had not imagined, but it also opened an intimacy into the lives of the people that come before the court. Not only does the court arraign new criminal matters and then proceed on to sentencing of criminal matters, but the court also enforces bench probations, monitors them, and DUII diversion programs. Being able to meet someone in a virtual courtroom turned out to be much more intimate than we ever anticipated. It gave people the freedom to talk about where they really were and what they were struggling with, and one person felt safe enough to share that they were experiencing suicidal ideation. It was very unexpected, but we actually were able to hook that person up with a community partner who was in the courtroom, who was able to get crisis intervention and get that person some support. And I'm really happy to say that as we continued to work with that person, we saw them become more and more stable, and they successfully completed their program, and they were very grateful to the services that we were able to connect them with. Having community partners in a community court is an integral part of helping people know where to go so that they're not isolated. Doing that in a pandemic is a lifeline. It's critical. And we have developed a number of community partnerships, and we like to tell you about those because without them, we would not be as vibrant as we are. Shannon?
We definitely have a very great partnership with MAC PD. Shout-out to Chief Scales. We, from a logistical point of view, in terms of getting court participants to appear virtually, that was, you know, something that we had to work on and figure out how to do. The PD will hand out forms on how to appear virtually. We also have, we work on a number of issues that arise, and we're trying to problem-solve issues with the PD as they come up. We also partner with Yen Hill County Circuit Court. I work, I would say in my position, that partnership is with the DA's office, as sometimes some of the municipal court cases do go to Circuit Court. And we also partner with the Yen Hill County Correctional Facility, as that is the jail where individuals who are arrested are lodged in jail on municipal court cases, if they are lodged. We worked with Captain Geist to work on a schedule for individuals serving their municipal court sentences in a manner that would keep COVID-19 out of his jail or at court sentences in a manner that would keep COVID-19 out of his jail or at least try to reduce that exposure. So it has been very, every time we reached out for help on these issues, it's been slow, but it has been, it's been, people have been receptive, and we, you know, are modifying to the, to the changes and challenges ahead of us.
And can we go back to the last slide, please? I'm so glad you were able to see one of the common technology matters that we have. And usually Meghan unmutes us. So addiction and recovery wraparound services and resources through Provoking Hope have been a part of our courtroom. Provoking Hope is an organization that can provide mentors and support for people struggling with both mental health or substance use issues. There are groups for sponsorship, emotional and spiritual support, but also information, education, and some practical help involving all kinds of social needs. There's also programs for parenting and an opportunity to get connected with other outreach services and addiction services. Provoking Hope has been coming into the courtroom with us. One of the high crimes that we have in the city is drug or intoxicant-related crimes. So driving under the influence of intoxicants could be alcohol or a controlled substance. And we have a high degree of DUII crimes occurring in the city and in the county. And Highway 99 is a thoroughfare, so our city is very open to that particular danger on our highways. So having a community partner that is based in recovery and based on sobriety, able to be in the courtroom at critical stages of a case, is a great way to hook someone up with recovery. We've had people who have never struggled with sobriety come in and make a connection with Provoking Hope, and we've had people who've had 37 years of sobriety, suffer a traumatic event, have a relapse, and be able to hook back into the recovery community with Provoking Hope. So that has been huge. Champion Team is another community partner that helped facilitate our more technology fragile users get to court. They were able to provide telephonic access and video access so that instead of failing to appear for a court appointment, those who didn't have access to technology could work with Champion Team and make their court appearances, thereby not incurring a failure to appear, which is a separate misdemeanor crime, and then having a bench warrant issued. So we really owe a tremendous debt of gratitude for Champion Team for their facilitation of people in the community that needed to come into court, and not just for arraignment, but also they facilitated sentencings by helping people fill out guilty pleas, or they would help people fill out requests for court-appointed attorneys and get that information back to the court. We're hoping to build a greater partnership with YCAP moving forward.
It wouldn't be a presentation without some statistics. So for 2020, the municipal court adjudicated 1,815 cases, and the breakdown is above. So the misdemeanor crimes, those 720 of those crimes were referred to the court. And so the judge indicated that municipal court handles most of, almost all of the misdemeanor crimes that take place in the city with the exception of domestic violence crimes and drug cases. So to give you an idea of those type of cases, these are DUIIs, what's commonly called hit-and-run, reckless driving, thefts, trespasses, assaults. These are also camping ordinance crimes as well as criminal mischief cases. There are more, but I would say those are the charges I see probably the most. There are, and then we also handle traffic violations, all the traffic violations that take, occur in the city of McMinnville. And that is handled, one, they could be handled in court by seeing the judge, but they also could be handled by Violations Bureau, which is handled by court staff. So Ms. Susanna Branson, as well as Mr. Vargas and Ms. Cohen are handling those cases. And sometimes when cases are eligible, individuals can take education classes, driving classes in lieu of having that violation go on their record. And it's my understanding that the municipal court has those opportunities, whereas Circuit Court does not have as many of those educational opportunities available. The municipal court also handles city ordinance violations. Now, those are different than camping. That's, could be like a nuisance case. That current procedure is changing so that, and evolving, and so that number is, you know, pretty small for the cases that are handled by the municipal court. But in addition to just these cases, the municipal court handles warrants, so once, or search warrants, review of search warrants, and the judge reviews those, I review those, but also when individuals miss court. Could we head back to the last slide? And those cases result in bench warrants, and so those individuals will get picked up and given new dates. The court also maintains bench probations and monitors those. So those are cases in which individuals are given a probationary term and conditions to complete in lieu of jail. And so the court staff is monitoring those. And to give you a comparison of cases, so we handle, or yes, municipal court has handled seven hundred and twenty cases. The Yan Hill County DA's office obviously handles misdemeanor and felony cases, but they had about 16,000 cases. They have two deputy DAs on staff to handle those cases, but they are handling all the other cases that take place in Yan Hill County, as well as the cases that we don't have jurisdiction over or do not see in municipal court.
Shannon, wasn't that 1,600 misdemeanors?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Did I say 16,000?
Yeah.
One, six, zero, zero. Sorry about that. And, let's see. In addition to bench probation, also, the court staff monitors deferred sentences. So those are situations where defendants are given the opportunity to keep their criminal history clean. And so they are given conditions to complete, usually it's education, community service, restitution to make victims whole, and then if those conditions are completed, then the case can be dismissed. And then you touched on it a little bit, Your Honor, but did you want to talk about traffic more, the traffic violations?
Yeah. So one of the things that's really important for a municipal court to do is to hold people accountable for traffic safety, working in conjunction with the police department. Keeping the roads and highways safe is, it's critical. It's, it gives people who are here, the residents, a sense of safety and security. If driving home, they're not worried about over-aggressive drivers. It's a safety issue when you think about Highway 99. W and we have a junior high and a high school that's located opposite from a major subdivision in the Grand Haven area. Children crossing that crosswalk that, the intersection that is unpatrolled, there's no, I haven't seen a crossing guard in decades. And we have the same thing even on Second Street, where we have children crossing to Newby and crossing to Dunaway Middle School. So traffic safety is huge, and if we can change behavior by holding people accountable for their driving, that's important. One of the programs that we have used primarily is education. We've had programs, everything from seatbelt classes to trauma nurses talk tough to our high-risk drivers. I understand that some of the, some of the trauma nurses talking tough ended up being traumatic to some of those high-risk drivers, but it was a dose of reality about how their driving can change people's lives and families' lives forever. We're now using a program called Uturn 180, and we've chosen that program right now because it's available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's an online class that someone can complete in about three to four hours, and it's $50 to register for that class. And it's taught by a former highway, state highway patrol officer who then went to work for ODOT and trained judges and prosecutors and other police officers in traffic safety. So we believe that education can be a great modifier of behavior. If we can modify behavior, then we can make the city highways and streets safer, not only for the families that live and work here, but also the people who want to come and visit. So we're pretty passionate about that. Violations Bureau handles a number of cases, and a number of cases still come to court and are scheduled into our virtual courtroom. In fact, we held virtual traffic court today. So with that, now, we have introduced you to the court staff. And I told you when it was started that, or when I talked about Sean, that we needed to separate out the city prosecutor's office from the court staff and administration because the city prosecutor's office obviously prosecutes, and court staff has to be neutral. Court staff in not only its administrative function when it's in City Hall, but also court staff when it's in the courtroom doing its judicial function. So with that, I would like to introduce you to our current city prosecutor so that she can tell you a little bit about herself and the services that she and her husband offer the city and McMinnville Municipal Court. Shannon?
Thank you. I'll try to be quick. I was born and raised in Portland. I graduated from Dickinson College in central Pennsylvania. I double-majored in environmental studies and East Asian studies, and my first law job was in Philly. I worked at Women Against Abuse Law Center, which is a wraparound services center that offered, that had a legal clinic, immediate shelter, as well as long-term housing. And that just gave me a taste for the law. I worked as an intake coordinator. After that, I was fortunate to get a Fulbright Fellowship with the Department of State. I studied environmental, non-governmental organizations in Beijing. So that was in, around 2004, so you can imagine that was a bit of a controversial topic to be researching. I was part of a team that launched the first English and Chinese website on sustainable consumption. And after my time in Beijing, I wanted to come back home and get back into the law, so I enrolled in the U of O School of Law. During that time, I was a summer associate for Bullitt-Helge Bailey, a civil firm up here in Portland. I've also clerked for the municipal county, excuse me, Multnomah County Circuit Court for Judge Yuliya Muush, who's now a federal magistrate. And my time as a clerk really fostered an interest in criminal law. I would see day in and day out criminal cases, and I really saw myself in the DA's seat. And so I worked as a deputy district attorney with the Multnomah County DA's office for five years. I worked on violations, misdemeanors, felony cases, which have included property and person crimes. I've handled domestic violence cases and handled Ballot Measure 57 and Ballot Measure 11 cases. While at the DA's office, I was also had the opportunity to be a neighborhood DDA, which is a unique position where I was located in the police precinct and was a liaison between my office and PBB, Portland Police. And I also handled a number of neighborhood issues in the specific precinct that I worked in. I joined my husband, and we formed a firm, which now we provide prosecution services to municipal courts. The year prior to that, I, about a year, I did some family law and criminal defense cases, so I've worn both hats. But we saw that there was a real need for quality prosecution services in smaller cities. And so in 2019, I was happy to join McMinnville, when the city attorney at the time and municipal court staff were indicating that there was a real commitment to justice in McMinnville and that the municipal court was seen as a service to the community and not a source of revenue, which was really great to hear. I wanted to make sure that I wasn't, you know, part of the next headline on, to be, you know, the next Ferguson. And so, and as the judge had mentioned, the municipal court was also, in the time of transitioning, the separation of court staff and city prosecutor's office. And so I was really, really, really excited to see that commitment to justice and the separation of powers. So now my firm, and actually me individually, I handle those administrative tasks as well as the city prosecution. And I wanted to give the council and mayor just a quick trends that I'm seeing and also some heads up on some legislation. In the cases that I've seen, there is always, and I would say probably the most, I guess the case with the most consequences I feel that we handle, or I handle, are DUIIs. And I think there is a constant stream of those DUIIs. They're both, or I guess maybe three types of DUIIs, alcohol or controlled substances or a combination of both alcohol and drugs. I've also, I'd say during the pandemic, I've seen an increase in what I call livability crimes. So those would be camping ordinance cases, trespass cases, theft cases. And those cases, those defendants generally require more time and resources. They have access, they have issues with access to technology, you know, prior to being able to just come into the court. Now, there's having to get onto the computer. And so, and then there's also the issue of mental health and substance abuse issues. And so we've really had to kind of modify the approach on how to handle those type of cases. In terms of legislation, I feel like the trend is, there is, there is a change coming. There is a lot of, I see in past legislation, as well as legislation coming down the line, kind of a reform in role of what law enforcement is going to look like. And, I mean, from prosecution also, but something that impacts the city and municipal courts a lot was House Bill 4210, which took away the authority to suspend someone's license because of non-payment of fines. And so that, you know, essentially was legislature saying, we're taking away that punitive action. And so that has passed. And then also legislation that's coming down the pipeline that I think will impact for sure practice and, just to, I guess, may cause, definitely probably will cause a conversation on how to handle these type of cases, is the right-to-rest legislation, and that would impact the enforceability of the McMinnville prohibited camping ordinance. Chief Scales and MAC PD is aware of this and we're watching the legislation. Obviously, it's not, hasn't been passed, but there's legislation, you know, that type of legislation of essentially decriminalizing houselessness, those would have impacts on a number of cases that we, I handle here in McMinnville. And so just wanted to give the council and mayor a heads up on those, and maybe, you know, we'll keep you updated, but if those things change, you know, we'll have to pivot again. And Jennifer will be introducing these next slides.
Yeah, so, so I just wanted to highlight, Shannon just mentioned that there has been some changes in Oregon law, and these, that's a really good example of one of the kind of national trends in looking at fines and imposed fees, and what role do they play, and whether or not they are actually potentially inhibiting policy outcomes, that larger policy outcomes that communities want to see. So, for example, if you don't have a driver's license, it's hard to get to work and take your kids to school and do those kinds of things. So there's a real push and pull right now, trying to figure out how to, how to achieve your policy objectives within a framework that actually works for the community. So this is a conversation that primarily does affect the municipal court. You will notice that our fines and fees revenue are coming down, partially due to the, to the COVID-19 epidemic, but also because of changes in legislation. And so one of the things that we will be looking at, and that is included in your packet, are new thinking and best practices in terms of fines and fees, and whether or not those, those revenues collected should be associated directly with the budgets of the court, for example. So those are conversations that are upcoming, and we will be using diversity, equity, and inclusion criteria to analyze these kinds of things. And so this is just a list of the kinds of criteria that we would probably be bringing to bear as we look at those fines and fee options that we have available to us. And we'll, we'll bring, we'll bring back to you all at a later time, deeper thinking on this topic. And so then I think we are heading towards the home stretch of wrapping up and talking about today and beyond, and then we'll be able to turn it over for the housing presentation that's up behind us.
So I think that in the interest of time, we're going to sort of pedal to the metal a little bit here, and we'll talk about programs. And then my hope is, is that the court can come back and present to the council on a more regular basis to keep you updated. I think these trends are important, and getting direction from the council on some of the issues that relate to equity and the values that we have in McMinnville would be important, as well as we have some of these conversations. I can tell council that judges, municipal court judges, are very concerned about these issues. I personally meet monthly with Judge Trine from Springfield Municipal Court and Judge Britton from Beaverton Municipal Court in kind of a think tank of how we can resolve some of these issues and really brainstorm what can work for now and what might work for the future. And we've been doing a lot of work with Sean in terms of equity and what would be easy to administrate for the court staff, particularly now when running court in the virtual world is so significantly labor-intensive. So Shannon, why don't you go ahead and touch on the court programs, and we'll wrap it up?
Yes. The current court programs, we have the hand-up program, which is, those are cases, livability crime cases, mostly camping ordinance cases. If an individual gets a camping ordinance case, and they go and complete an intake at either YCAP, Champion Team, Provoking Hope, and get connected to services, or essentially information about those services available in McMinnville, then they can have their case dismissed. That has been, we have had a number of people successfully have their cases dismissed. We do have some continuing people come to court with those cases, but they still are willing to get more information about services and also reach out to different organizations, which has been kind of a new mode for, kind of changing the practice in COVID. We, this year, we are excited to have graduated our first participant in Veterans Court. We worked, we had a veterans liaison who came in person to court and had resources available, community service, all kinds of resources for our veterans in the court system. We also started SAFE this year, which is Self-Acountability for Community Enrichment, and that is essentially an hour-for-hour credit. So for individuals who are, and this is on a case-by-case basis, individuals who have community service requirements as part of their conditions of either probation or deferred sentence, those can be, instead of traditional community service, it also could be things like mental health evaluations, parenting classes, community meetings such as AA or NA. And we found that, one, that's, some of those things are more easily accessible during COVID, but also seen some success with that. One thing that is not on the list, and I'm very excited, and we've touched on it a little bit, is our RTCC program, Real-Time Community Connections, and that's where we have community partners in the courtroom. And I think that is, we have had individuals indicate, you know, self-harm, make comments about that, and we were able to connect them right away. There were, there are some certified recovery mentors available, and so it's, it's very rewarding to see that work happen right then and there.
Shannon, it looks like Council President Drapkin has a question. Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually, I just wanted to step back a second to the conversation that was happening around the DEI initiatives within the court system, and you were talking about coming back to council with some of that. And without getting ahead of myself, I would love to start a conversation between the chair and co-chair of our newly-formed DEI Advisory Committee and the court. We are in the process of forming our agenda, and it seems like there could be a timely conversation there. So I just, I just wanted to put that out right away.
Yeah, definitely. I know that I had reached out to the HR director, and I had actually missed the window for my understanding of the current open recruitment, but that there was potential for a city committee. And I didn't mention this, but I was very proud to become part of a team that is very diverse. We have a female judge at the time, before our bailiff retired. He was African-American. We have a bilingual staff member, Freddie Vargas. We have our two interpreters, and you have Chinese-American me. And so I am very excited, because usually I'm not surrounded by diversity, inclusion. So I think that's really great.
Yeah, Council President Drapkin, Kylie and I have spoken about this specifically, and I'm going to begin to sit in on the meetings of the new advisory committee so that I can get a handle on what, what priorities and things they are looking at, and then we can plug in as best we can to what they're wanting to tackle, both from the perspective of the municipal court, but also if there are any financial or budgeting things that they're interested in, so.
Wonderful. We're, it's very much still in a give-and-take, where it just, we've had only two meetings so far, and so we're in a very much formative stage in terms of forming an action plan. And I think it's so important that we understand what areas of our city are already focusing on this and, and bringing attention to it so that we can be acting holistically. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, much of this program tonight would be appropriate for that group to kind of get to a point where they're understanding, and then you can have kind of a partnership of understanding and growth and training and learning. Go ahead, Shannon. Again, I'd seen, I saw the hand raise, so.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I would, I think the, our plan to finish up would be future programs, but I think that I would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, there's, there is, the municipal court is an opportunity for DEI training and implementation, and I think to meet many of the MAC Towns' goals. But it is going to be difficult and challenging, given the budget cuts and the furloughs. The, that, this work takes commitment, but it also takes time and backing. And so I'm hoping that the council has that, that they will commit to that and, and back that, because the work is near and dear to my heart personally, and I know the municipal court team as well.
I think when we look at equity, we also look at poverty, and we've designed a number of court orders to make sure that we are keeping doors of access to justice open and not using financial hardship as yet another barrier. So we've been really cognizant of that, and we have realized that from an equity perspective, when it comes to poverty, you cannot make a one-size-fits-all. So we've tried to be very fluid about lifting driver's license suspensions. We've looked at what an individual can put down and what they can pay, and for the sake of equity, we have decidedly not done one-size-fits-all. And Susannah told me earlier today that I believe collections brought in about 15,000. And I think in a recent check that came in, I think that some of that is showing people that you are willing to work with them, that it's not a locked door. It does require a knock, but that we can work it out. I also wanted to say that we are, we are grateful to serve in a very diverse community. Not only do we have a strong Hispanic community presence here, but we also have a Native American community presence here. And we're mindful of that in terms of the users that come into our court. Our court administrator has, is of Native American descent, and so we just try to be very respectful of all different traditions and backgrounds, and to acknowledge the barriers that certain underrepresented and overrepresented people have had in dealing with justice in the courts, and trying to break those perceptions so that the people that come into McMinnville Municipal Court feel heard, and they feel seen. And then we do our best to provide justice in a way that benefits the community as a whole. And I think the future programs, you can read, and we'd love to come back and talk to you more about that. And I thank you tonight for letting us come before you.
Your Honor and members of the municipal court staff, thank you. So eye-opening this evening, you know, for us that have served quite a while. We don't want to have to come and visit you, so you're out of sight, out of mind sometimes, but we, we know how critical this, this important work is to the safety and to holding accountability in this community. I see Counselor Peralta has a question. Sal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. First, Your Honor and staff, I just want to say how appreciative I am of the work that you do for the city. As you were talking, I was kind of going through and taking a look at the budget that you have to work with. And for all the services that you provide, $550,000 for the level of service that you provide seems to me a very efficient operation, so I'm really appreciative of that. And I'm also very appreciative to hear you lend your perspective in terms of your approach to justice. I really appreciated the comment. I think it was Ms. Erxine who said that, you know, they weren't, that they appreciated being in a city that where this is not treated as a revenue-generating situation, but rather as an opportunity to provide help and for people who need it. I'm mindful of Judge Kaufman Noble's comment about the issues that we have with public safety and how things have changed. And so I just have a couple of questions, if I may, for both, well, for any of you, but particularly for Judge Noble and for Ms. Erxine. So it seems to me that this next budget year for you is something of a watershed year because of the changes that have happened with regard to criminalization of drug possession. I saw that in, with Measure 110, they've shifted possession from a criminal violation to no more than a Class E violation, and I don't think a Class E violation is even defined, or maybe it is defined in the, in the, in 110, but that didn't exist before Measure 110. And so does the city need to create a new ordinance to handle that category of Class E violation? And if so, is that, how is that going to affect court services or utilization of court? And then second, given what you're doing to shift people towards resources, does that somehow provide us with an opportunity as a city to address issues related to homelessness and maybe funnel even more people to services than we have been able to previously? Because I know you said that the drug court at the county level, all of those cases get pushed there currently, but I was wondering with 110 decriminalizing possession, I would assume those cases won't now go to drug court. And so how will that affect your court, your court, is sort of one question. And then the second question that I had also relates to homelessness, which is that I've seen people in our community, and I'm not going to be specific about people, but there is one person that I'm thinking of who, I believe she's mentally ill, I mean, she's clearly mentally ill. I've seen a downward trajectory in terms of her behavior over, you know, five or six years that I believe is, probably has been treatable, and that she just is not getting access to services. I assume that carries a significant cost for both the court and to the extent that she's accessing emergency services. Is there, what can we do differently, if anything, from a policy standpoint to try and help people in her situation? Because, you know, on the one hand, we'd like to get her to services, and then on the other hand, the conduct that, that is associated with some of this is very wearing on the community's patience and, and good, goodwill, I guess. So that was quite a lot. I guess I'll throw that, I'll leave that. Actually, I do have a third question, which is tangential to this, which is that if we were to add code protections for tenants, you had very few cases that were related to code violations, and I'm wondering if that would also significantly increase your workflow? So those are the three things, and thank you again for the presentation.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Council Peralta. I wanted to speak to Measure 110 really briefly. You are absolutely right. A Class E violation is a new creature, and it was created within the measure, and it's a maximum of $100, no matter what, nothing can be added to it, including the way I read it, statutory assessments. Right now, because municipal court does not have jurisdiction of misdemeanor drug offenses, we have really not dealt with drug offenses per se. I mean, we've handled less than an ounce of marijuana because they made that particular statute identical to minor in possession of alcohol, minor in possession of less than an ounce. I mean, certain things about that flowed with alcohol, and then the parallel part of it made it, and it was a violation, made it very easy for the court. it very easy for the court to process and adjudicate those cases. Now, with Measure 110, it's a little bit of a cluster. I don't know if that's a proper word to use at a council meeting, but it's up there. Beaverton's trying to handle it. I don't think Springfield is going to touch it. I think it's each court's discretion. And right now, honestly, we're sitting and waiting to see what Circuit Court's going to do and what our District Attorney, Brad Berry, is going to do. I have not had a specific conversation with Shannon, with Brad about this in terms of shared jurisdiction, but right now, we simply are not seeing those cases, and I assume that they're all going to Brad. With regard to the resources and the city and homelessness and policy, you know, those needs are huge. And so often, we see people thrown into the criminal justice system that truly don't belong there, whether it's mental health, it could be an elder situation like dementia, it could be addiction, and it could be a combination of all three of those, and it could also be profound trauma. We would very much like to have more resources to offer folks. Part of why we did a Veterans Court was to look at trauma and mental health and substance use of our veterans because there, those cases came to our attention through DUIIs and the need for that. We desperately need a mental health court. And I believe that we need a high-risk drivers court for repeat offenders who, they wouldn't qualify for diversion, but they need to be in a treatment court so that, again, there's greater accountability. And it's the same with mental health court. I was part of the first mental health court as a defense attorney under Judge Jones, and then later taken over by Judge Stone in Circuit, in Circuit Court. Those are some of the things that we need to happen, but quite frankly, right now, the bandwidth is not there. I'm glad that you looked at the budget. I will tell you that in spite of population increase and crime increase, our staffing has gone down and our, and our budget, it's tight. And so, those are all challenges, particularly during COVID, and particularly during a time when we see the city having to do furloughs, and we're an essential function. We are committed to absolutely maintaining and sustaining the services that we can offer, but we also recognize that in order to sustain and maintain, we may not be able to grow in a way that is in line and in keeping with the pace of the social and needs, criminogenic needs of the city. So, it's, it's a conundrum, and I'm hoping that as we plan the future and the court and the council have more of a discussion about those needs and the policies, we can have a meeting of the minds about some of the direction that would be helpful based on the needs that are seen. As to the code issue, a lot of that right now, we had a huge shift when we changed code enforcement and into a more administrative function. And we have, one of our pro temp judges, well, our only other pro temp at present, Judge Terry Marr, has handled some of those adjudications when they needed to come before the court. And, you know, I'm not sure how to really address that question other than to say, I'd love to know more about it and process that a little more and maybe get back to you so we can have a more fluid conversation about it. Speaking of pro temps, I'm hoping to bring on another pro temp judge, and I don't know if that's already been presented to the City Council, but there's an opportunity to have another well-experienced criminal judge come so that we would literally have a code enforcement judge and another traffic pro temp and then a criminal pro temp. So, I hope that kind of answers your questions, Councilman.
It did, Your Honor. Thank you very much. And I see Ms. Erxine also wanted to respond, so I'll stop talking.
Sorry about that. I couldn't figure out how to raise my hand, fortunately. In terms of, I just wanted to make sure, and I'm not sure if the judge and I agree on this, but in terms of a mental health court, my position is that the police and me prosecuting, I, there are cases where there are mental health issues and the individuals have crossed into the line and are now in the criminal justice system, and that behavior needs to be addressed. But there is a significant portion, which I think, and I honestly don't have an answer for you, of policies that could change, but to stop those individuals from coming into, crossing over that line into the criminal justice system. Because, quite frankly, I'd like to see, I would like to be prosecuting criminals and, you know, having our officers handling, you know, the people that need to, unfortunately, are in this, in this system and not handling the mental health issues. I wish I had a better answer in terms of what policies could make that change. I, I just don't right now.
It seems like we don't have the resources to send people, I mean, despite the best efforts of our community partners, there are not the resources to meet the need, either in the city or overall within the region. I guess on that note, I just want to say, I am not sure how you managed to make the transition to a virtual court and then stay within your budget. So, congratulations on that for this year. And again, thank you. And I will be reaching out to you, Judge Noble Kaufman, and Kaufman Noble and you, Ms. Erxine separately. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those questions. And in lieu of the time, I think we move on, but I will, Jeff and I will talk. I think we do need to have you come before us more than once in a lifetime. You know, being a state counselor for 12 years and then going into my fifth year, this has been the most focused and knowledgeable session I've had with the municipal court in its understanding. We need to do it more often and have more dialogue, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, and thank you, Jennifer. That takes us to our third item of business this evening, which is the City Center Housing Strategy Presentation. And we've got Senior Planner Chuck Darnell to make this presentation. Some of us have maybe seen pieces of this. I know those in, that have gone to MURAC have seen pieces of this and maybe in our Affordable Housing Committee. But I see Chuck is here. I see Heather's here. Heather, do you want to set anything up, or do we just go right to Chuck?
I'm going to set it up because I also want to do a time check with you. Chuck and I have been texting each other. So, we had originally planned this as a 45-minute work session with you. Given the time, we can reduce that. Our intention behind this is that you have a project advisory committee that's been working on a city center housing strategy for you, City Council, to adopt. It finally went through our McMinnville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee with a recommendation to adopt at their last meeting here in April. And it has, it has some good action plans in it that we'd like to get into our work program. We have it scheduled to come to you as a resolution on May 11. May 11 is a business meeting. You have a fairly packed agenda for that meeting, so we wanted to be able to go over the plan with you in a work session in advance of bringing it to you as an action item so that you were familiar with it and felt comfortable considering it as an action item. So, Chuck and I, we think we can reduce the presentation to 20 to 25 minutes, removing perhaps some of the background stuff, Chuck, and maybe the more detailed pro forma stuff and focus on the action plan. The, the plan itself has a lot of informative information in it, and then it has an action plan, which is really what we're committing ourselves to is, is moving forward with that action plan.
Okay, I, I'll just, I'll just put that out to the counselors. Does that seem appropriate for this evening, that we can get that information prior to this coming to City Council in May? Okay? Any people going up? So, go ahead, Chuck.
All right, great. Thanks for taking the time tonight. I'm going to share my screen here. And close my window so the dogs don't bark. But yeah, thanks, thanks, tonight. So, tonight, the presentation is about the City Center Housing Strategy Project, which Heather mentioned that we've been working on for quite a while now. The purpose of this project was to develop a strategy for the city to increase and incentivize housing in the city center area. It's an area where, you know, just traditionally in planning, you would encourage higher density in your core area. It's an area where we have higher density zoning, and a lot of our city policies in the comprehensive plan and other things point to having higher density in this area. So, we focused the project area on kind of what we, what we call the city center, which included the entire urban renewal boundary. So, that covers Third Street and the Northeast Gateway and the Alpine and Lafayette corridors. And it also included the areas north and south of downtown that are currently some of our higher density zoning, that being C3, OR, which is an office residential mixed-use zone, and R4, which is our higher-density residential zone. So, that was the project area that we focused on, where we would be looking to potentially incentivize additional housing. The, the project was overseen by a project advisory committee, which was made up of all of MURAC. They participated in funding the project. And then we brought in some other representatives from other committees and interests. So, we had someone from Council, Kelly Menke, a couple of planning commissioners, someone from the Historic Landmarks Committee, as they're often involved in the downtown area, and then some other organizations such as MEDP and the Downtown Association, and also a community member in Mark Davis. And then various staff was involved in the process from, from a number of different departments. The PAC met four times over the development of the project, which was focused during May 2019 through May of 2020. And we got to a point where we had finished up the final report that is before you tonight, and the PAC had some questions on some additional research that they were interested in pursuing. And at that time, we decided to put the, that additional work on hold because we were focused on some of our other long-range finding projects. But we did bring the project back to MURAC and the PAC just this last couple of months in March and April of this year, and brought back the same topics that were being discussed, which I'll touch on a bit later in the presentation. But they reconvened those discussions and decided to recommend moving forward with the project. The main goals of the project and kind of the outcomes were, are listed here, and they're identified in more detail in the final report, which is attached to the packet this evening. But the main goals were to identify desired housing types in the city center area. The ones that were eventually selected are shown there on the screen. Evaluate our existing city codes and policies and identify whether there's any potential barriers to housing development within the city center area. There is some analysis of existing housing market conditions and some of our opportunity sites and where those might exist throughout this area. And then doing some testing of our development codes through pro forma analysis and some selection of what we called pilot projects, which were just to do a bit more of a diagram of a potential development project and what that might look like in some particular properties. This all kind of culminated with an action plan, which I'll go through in more detail tonight, which is intended to provide actions the city can follow to assist in providing more housing in this area. So, I mentioned the final report. That is kind of the final product from this project. It includes all the background information that we went through all the way up to that action plan that I just mentioned. It's organized into two parts. The first part is kind of the intro and vision and background information, some of the summary of the PAC input and some of our focus groups that we had provide input on the project. And then the second part, Part Two, is focused on the strategy and the action plan and some of the steps that were taken to, to get to that action plan. There was a lot of discussion early on in the project in terms of just information gathering and getting feedback from the project advisory committee and also some focus groups that we had put together. So, we focused on getting ideas about, you know, what was desired for housing in the city center area, figuring out where those issues and barriers are and what, what problems people had seen over time and people attempting to develop housing in the city center, and identifying opportunity sites and potential ideas for how we could incentivize additional housing. We had four different focus groups. The first was just with city staff that are, that are involved in development review and understanding of infrastructure capacity and things like that. And then three other groups, one with policymakers that a couple of you as counselors, I think, were involved in, one with developers and one with property owners and opportunity site owners in the city center area. The developer and the property owner groups were interested to get perspective from those types of individuals. We had some developers that have built and also, you know, been in due diligence on, on housing projects from kind of mid-scale, six to eight-unit apartment buildings up to larger scale, more urban type of apartment development in the Northeast Gateway area and in the downtown, and got their input and feedback on, on where issues had arose for them as they were looking into projects. So, some of the major barriers that were identified were related to some of our existing codes primarily. Some of the desired housing types were either not permitted or restricted in some ways within the existing code and the zoning districts that are, that exist in the downtown area. There's some density requirements in the code that conflict with the city center vision and some of the housing goals citywide and also in the comprehensive plan. Parking was a large issue that came up in terms of development feasibility. And then also, some of our existing design standards are geared more towards commercial uses in this area and are difficult to apply to residential projects. And there's also some design standards and review procedures that have some subjectivity, which result in difficulty in applicants designing projects and preparing those to bring into the state for review. One component of the project did do a deeper dive on financial feasibility and went through some testing through what's called pro forma analysis of potential housing projects. And this was done to analyze our current development code, identify where those barriers might exist to developing desired housing types, and then doing some testing and adjustment of some of the inputs to that feasibility testing to see whether changes to the development code would have an impact on project feasibility. The, the project consultants looked at two different forms of development, and they kind of had to select a couple of options to focus on. And so, we looked at kind of a large, kind of high, large-scale project, so mixed use on a full city block, mixed use being some form of residential above commercial, and then standalone residential on half of a city block. These are just the results of the pro forma. I won't go through these in great detail. There's an entire appendix that's attached to the final report that includes all of these findings. But these, these are just summary pages that identify some of the results of, of the pro forma analysis. So, they looked at, you know, looking at our existing code and what the base standards are, and then looked at plugging in some other inputs to see how those impact project feasibility. So, one was looking at reducing parking standards, maximizing building height, and then all the way up to having no parking, which wasn't really intended to be something that was going to be a result of the project, but just to kind of test the full potential build-out of a project, say. And then these, these, the graphs here summarize the findings of that. You can see the reduction in parking has the biggest impact on project, on unit cost or rent levels, which translate to potentially better feasibility for projects and ability to provide more housing. And this is just the residential on a half-block, kind of same thing, looking at the same different inputs and how those things change project feasibility and unit cost. project feasibility and, and unit cost. This, this point in particular didn't have a large impact on costs in terms of looking at some of the reductions other than reducing the size of units to get to a very small product type, just because the units went up significantly. But there was an ability to increase the number of homes that can be provided by reducing parking and that in the project consultant's recommendations had, had the biggest impact on project feasibility. So some of the takeaways from that work were really just a confirmation of what staff has seen and heard over the past years in terms of people looking at doing projects in the downtown area and, I mean, kind of citywide as well. Just that the combination of land and construction costs for these types of projects, particularly in this area, haven't been penciling, which means they're not aligning in terms of the rent levels and the traditional types of performance that financial lenders might be looking for. And some of those rent levels that might be necessary to support returns that are required for traditional financing aren't aligning exactly with McMinville's market and existing rent levels that are able to be achieved. Parking is a major barrier to housing. I think that's something that we've heard a lot and this pro forma test kind of solidified that. Like I had just mentioned, one of the biggest takeaways was that, you know, it might not have a huge impact on unit cost, but feasibility of a development project increases pretty significantly when more units can be provided with, with the same amount of parking. Primarily in this area because the real estate required for parking is impactful. In the downtown, in the city center area, you're typically typically looking at, you know, smaller sites that are not like a larger apartment complex site that you might see kind of in a more suburban development pattern at further out from the downtown core. And this is very consistent with the feedback that we received from the developer focus group. Some of the challenges, challenges that they ran into as they were looking at, into due diligence on some of their projects. The next kind of test in the, in the plan and the project was to look at a couple of pilot project sites. And for these, we selected a couple that one being a city owned property in the fire station. It was identified that that property may be, you know, available for redevelopment as needs for the fire department and fire services change over time. And then the second one was the Cooperative Ministries property. That's a full city block owned, owned by McMinville Cooperative Ministries and they're interested in looking at doing some kind of housing development on their site to provide services and just supplement their operations there and assist in that long term. And so we partnered with them and they, some representatives from the co-op were involved in this project and, and providing some guidance on, on their site. And so we did some testing of development programs for each site, looked at a couple of different options for types of development that could occur there, you know, looking at existing development standards. Again, looking at if there were changes to those development standards. Are some of those barriers lifted to new projects become more realistic? Things like looking at parking for residential uses, reducing parking for commercial uses and exploring things like SROs. In particular, that was something that the Cooperative Ministries team was, was interested in. And then ultimately developed a final option for each site that kind of balanced between those existing standards and potential changes. So this was the, the resulting kind of selected project for the fire station property. And again, this was, these were intended to be kind of an example of a, of a large scale development that could, could occur. Not necessarily these were what was being, you know, supported for actually occurring, but it was, it was, it was meant to test the, the code and see just what the maximum potential might be for a property. In this case, it was a mixed use project with commercial on the ground floor, residential above. This one shows a hundred and twenty units and then parking to support that. The Cooperative Ministries site was a little more unique because they were, they explored a lot of different options. You can see all of those in the appendix attached to the final report, but they were interested in maintaining their assembly space on site, adding in some commercial space for lease opportunities to support the church functions long term and also providing some residential units on site. And so they had kind of a mixed use program on the block and ended up at this as being their preferred option with some commercial and assembly and potential residential in that commercial space. And then also residential on the south side adjacent to what kind of becomes more the residential neighborhood as you go south is, south of First Street. So the, the kind of major outcome of, of the project was the development of an action plan. And that's kind of the focus, like Heather mentioned at the beginning of, of what the adoption of this city center housing strategy report would be, is that this action plan would provide some actions for the city, you know, whether it be the planning commission, planning department, or the urban renewal agency to continue to evaluate and look at moving forward to, to incentivize housing in the city center area. They're organized into four categories and I'll just go through each of those here briefly. Again, this page shows all of the ones related to removing barriers that are kind of code related, including, you know, looking at removal or adjustment of density requirements in the city center area. Look at reducing residential parking minimums, extending the parking reduction area. Currently, the code allows for no parking right on the core along Third Street, and there's a reduced parking area that extends north of downtown, but it does not extend south of downtown. So that was a recommendation to consider that. Revising parking lot standards for smaller scale residential development. Right now, I had mentioned parking is pretty impactful in terms of real estate. Our current code basically requires even small scale multifamily projects like a fourplex or anything larger to follow the same parking standards as would be required for like a commercial shopping center. So a large two, two lane drive, drive aisle with parking on each side. And that's just impactful in terms of providing off street parking on site with access requirements like that. Some other ones that are also being considered in terms of just some other projects, I think that, you know, the Affordable Housing Task Force is looking at permitting townhouses in the C three zone, looking at single room occupancies or SROs. And then the last couple are related to creating more specific setback. So kind of base zoning standards and also design standards for residential projects. Right now, a lot of our code, especially in the downtown design area is, is more focused on commercial development. And it's difficult to apply to residential projects. So there's each, each of these categories in the action plan have more detail. If you see on the screen here, I didn't want to show all that text on the slides, so I'll just show the, the next few categories here and the, the major major actions that are included in each one. But this one's related to providing incentives to support development. Things like working on pilot projects in partnership with a developer if the city had the ability to do so. Providing subsidy gap financing, potentially assistance with SDC costs or property acquisition. And then some others that are related to more knowledge based, making resources available such as a developer bootcamp or compiling a guidebook of financial assistance for projects. The third category is related to improving street character connections and walkability. So some of those physical kind of urban forum types of things that would, that were identified as, as being impactful on housing in the downtown area. So some of these things have been discussed, I think, in other projects, street skate improvements on Adams and Baker and Lafayette. Strengthening the connection between the Alpine District and Third Street, making that connection better if, if we're trying to encourage housing in the Northeast Gateway area. And then one that was added by the PAC was thinking about an urban open space network to support downtown housing. And then finally, the fourth category was, were some, a few actions related to aligning enforcement and programming efforts. One was consider some evaluation of short-term rental regulations in the downtown area. There's a strong caveat with that one, that there is also a need for tourism and rental or lodging uses in the downtown. So that's a, a balance that would need to be considered. And some of the other ones are related to evaluation of infrastructure and capacities to support additional housing in the downtown, particularly in transportation modeling, making sure our parking management plans of the city's system of providing off-street parking and on-street parking throughout the downtown area and reviewing school capacity and other public services. So the, at the last meeting of MIRAC, MIRAC and, and the PAC, those members were invited back to participate. Discussed again the, the project and ultimately recommended that the city council and the urban renewal agency adopt the final report for the city center housing strategy, which again includes that action plan to help provide some guidance for various city work programs. And as Heather mentioned, we're gonna plan to schedule that for review and potential adoption by resolution at the May eleventh city council meeting. One item that did come up in discussion and was the result of some of the, the delay in the project and, and some of the additional research that was initially being considered was that the PAC did recommend adoption with one note that some of the analysis in the financial feasibility and the pro forma analysis was not found to be entirely accurate with McMinville's market. And that was some of the cost of the units that were needed to meet some of the traditional financial performance. But the PAC discussed this at their last meeting and ultimately they decided it did not change the outcomes or the takeaways from the pro forma analysis and didn't impact the recommendations of the action plan. So they still still were supporting the project and the action plan items, but did want to note that, that there was that bit of a disconnect there. And with that, I'll welcome any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Chuck, for that presentation and, and, and and the skinny down version. But councillors may have some specific questions because the alternative is to do more reading on your own with the, the report and the, the conclusions that come from that. And so any questions for Chuck? Again, a lot of good, a lot of good work by the PAC and MIRAC. And then there's been some, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee has been doing a lot of this work also. So Chris, question?
It's not really a question, more, more of a comment. I would be kind of adverse to any code changes that are going to result in more parking on the street downtown. And so whatever we're looking at in terms of this action plan to try to address the parking issue, I just would, would want to see if there's alternatives providing more parking. Maybe the city can provide the parking. I, I, I don't know what alternatives can be done at this point. But if, if we, if we start increasing housing down on Third Street and don't provide the parking for that housing, that's going to create all kinds of other side issues for the businesses that are down there and those that are trying to head down that direction. So, you know, I don't know if, if perhaps using, and, and I don't know, I haven't looked at the MIRAC dollars, using MIRAC dollars to look at in, in our own public parking facility to take pressures off of the need for the builders that are trying to develop downtown is an option. But I, I just, I, I would be adverse to anything that's going to result in more congestion and parking problems downtown.
So I, I think you will see the city council, if any code changes come forward. Right now, Third Street itself is in a no, has no parking standards at all. So there's, there's no parking requirements except for residential. And I don't anticipate we'll see a lot of housing development on Frontage on Third Street specifically. We are seeing a lot of interest in housing development on some of the other peripheral streets, first, second, fourth, fifth, and then maybe down by Johnson area. And what we can do is we can look at, maybe we dedicate certain areas where we have different types of parking requirements based on what we're seeing in terms, in terms of parking utilization. So where we're seeing log jams of parking and we have that parking study that gives us the heat map for that. We do have right now, we have a, we have a housing development that's trying to move forward and they've been asking us a lot of questions about our parking requirements. Recently just asking us, even if they could visit with a neighbor who has a large parking lot and, and utilize their parking for residential development in a shared parking agreement. And we don't really have the allowance to allow that right now either. It's very, very restrictive in terms of parking for residential. So what we'd like to do is at least come back with some recommendations on how to make it more flexible. Keeping in mind what our parking constraints are currently on the street.
And I think that's great. What I'm just concerned about is, you know, just as an example, I, I live over on Devport and I live literally right, right down the street from my house is an apartment complex. Every side court is filled with parking overflow. It doesn't, it doesn't just stop right around the building that's being built. It goes blocks outward if you have lots of residents in that structure. So if we're going to be allowing, which I'm for, we need to have, you know, some, some increase in high density housing, that's fine. But if we're going to do that, we also need to have the appropriate infrastructure to support it. And, and not end up overflowing into Third Street, which is already during peak hours, very difficult to find a place to park.
Thank you for those comments, Chris. Any other specific questions that the council would have? Councillor Gary? You're on mute.
Man, it was a great joke. You guys missed. Duck tails well into the parking and then I've got a couple of other questions. Thank you, first off, for staff, for the presentation and great work. Beat my little record, beat the, my guess at when you guys would be done on my notepad here. So nice job, Chuck. Well, regarding parking, it's a good thing autonomous cars are coming in like three years and it's just all private talk. Did you guys, I know that the, the no parking requirement downtown kind of already existing and then the half requirement zoning out throws a little bit of a wrench in there. Did the committee look at all? And I didn't, I didn't see it in there and maybe they did and it didn't make to the notes, but look at short of, right, development funding, the parking solution for that development. Whatever the number was that made the pro forma flip to red, whatever that number was or the lower funding mechanisms for the creation of a public parking, public parking on its own, right? They, you know, you, you contribute to the, this fund that then looks at improving the public parking we already have or turning the two, two, two-story structure into a four-story structure and it helps invest in that. Did, did the committee look at any funding models for group and shared investment in larger public parking infrastructure?
So we, I think you're talking about parking in lieu of fund, the N fund. So cities will set up a parking fund and a developer who wants to develop something and can't create the parking on their site pays into the fund for the public parking, for the future public parking capital improvement project. And lots of cities have that, especially in their downtowns relative to housing. We did not talk about that specifically because the action plan is to explore how to, how to reduce the parking requirements for housing to make it more financially feasible. So that could be one of the things that we look at. I can tell you in the, right now in our urban renewal plan, we only have a million dollars set aside with thirty million dollars for parking. That's not going to buy a lot of public parking. And parking structures themselves are, you know, fairly expensive these days. So we can look at those as solutions. I'm not, I'm not confident that that's a solution for McMinville necessarily because of how expensive it is. And we don't have large tracts of land in which to place them, putting a, we did have as part of our parking study, they did a little bit of studies about how to place a structure on half a block in downtown McMinville and a full block in downtown McMinville. So we have those numbers. But the cost of a stall on a half a block in downtown McMinville is very expensive as well in a parking structure.
So to summarize, no, they didn't look at it because their task was look at ways to reduce the parking burden, not alternate methods for people to park?
No, because we didn't go into those types of details. What we were identifying was what are the barriers right now for residential development? And what, what are, what's future evaluation that needs to occur to remove those barriers? So a barrier right now is the requirement for the number of parking stalls for residential development in terms of real estate, how much real estate it consumes for off-street parking. And right now you have to And right now you have to provide the off-street parking on the same site as the residential development or multifamily development. So the, the action is what are some ways to remove those barriers? What are different types of programs? One, look at code requirements. Two, perhaps look at these other types of alternative programs that we can explore too.
Did you look, um, had that thread of that question and I lost it. Do you look at ways in which to, um, create a methodology to, I guess, I guess, okay. The statement I was going to make was philosophically, I think we should all wish, we should be going towards encouraging less parking and then there's going to be a squishy time in between where it's going to be hard to teach people to drive less or not own a car. And to get there, I think the downtown needs to develop, like we're hoping all of our pocket neighborhoods develop to offer all services in a walkable nature. Did you look at any methodology in which the, you know, residential above, commercial below, we could put our thumb on the scale and dictate what goes into that commercial? You know, grocery store, right? Those type of things that, that we don't have downtown that would create a walkable, more walkably, more walkably successful community?
Me, so, uh, it, I mean, the fact that developers are not building downtown housing today is because there isn't the walkable amenities nearby.
Well, I think what you, what turned that in my mind was you talked about ways to reduce parking and it seems that it's going to be tough because we don't have a, a dearth of parking options downtown that, that then you, so let's look at ways we could ensure that the area offers amenities that you don't need to own a car and drive, thusly park it or, or be in constant flux and in, in movement.
Yeah. And, and I think the assumption is, is that in the city center, you have, you have that situation where you shouldn't have to drive everywhere to access amenities. Um, I think this might help a little bit. So with our missing middle housing code that by state mandate, we need to pass as a city by June of 2022, we will not be allowed to require more than one space per residential dwelling unit for a duplex, triplex, quadplex to one, two, threes and fours and cottage clusters, townhomes. Right now, we require two parking spaces per single family dwelling unit and two parking spaces for the other unit. So in our neighborhoods where these can all be built, we'll only be able to require at a maximum one parking space for housing unit. Right now in our multifamily code, in our, which would be in our high density residential zones, so the R4s in the city center, we require at least one and a half parking stalls per residential unit. And if they get, if the residential unit is a three bedroom, two bath, it's two stalls. So we will be requiring more parking for multifamily apartments than we will for duplexes, triplexes and fiveplexes if we keep with this current code.
Okay. Another question I had was around height limitations and height in our code. And I know we're, we're pretty, I don't know how, what you guys bumped up against that in general, but I know specifically we have some language limiting to a two-story building at corners in that downtown area. Did you guys look at that as a necessity to move out? I don't know how much we're, you know, sticking with that code or if it's, this is the opportunity to clean that up, but the ability to have bigger than a two-story, actually have a bigger than a two-story building at the corners, especially when you're talking about whole entire blocks, it seems.
Yeah. So one of the actions is to look at the downtown design standards and compatibility with housing development. So that, that would come up. I will say that current, the current code allows waivers, i.e. the first federal building is participating under a waiver process for that very height issue right there. But yeah, there's compatibility issues with residential development in the current downtown design standards.
Okay. And then what, what specifically was the, threw off the pro forma numbers from being relatable to McMinnville?
Um, it was related to some of the, um, well, I think it was ultimately kind of based on the rent levels that were shown in there, um, and what the rent price per unit would be, um, and that those weren't in line with, um, what we're seeing in McMinnville. Uh, but that was kind of the result of, you know, they, they use a lot of industry standards and a lot of assumptions obviously go to any pro forma and they were just using, you know, traditional rates of, uh, return that, you know, someone might be looking for. And to get that rate of return required such, in such, you know, income level. Um, and so, you know, performances obviously are difficult to, you know, standardize to, to any, you know, particular project. Every site is going to be a little different. Every developer is going to have a different risk tolerance and have different funding, uh, you know, and lending requirements. And so ultimately I think that, that was what led to the PAC deciding that, you know, the, the outcomes of the study and the analysis still showed that some of the changes to code had impacts. It's just that the, all the numbers and the resulting figures, uh, for some of those rent levels weren't exactly in line with McMinnville's market. Um, on the corner, uh, and, and two-story, uh, item, that was specifically discussed. Um, I'm trying to find in which exact action it's, it's listed, but, um, I believe that one was specifically recommended to be removed to allow for, um, you know, larger or, you know, more dense development at intersections. Um, I know that is something that the Historic Landmarks Committee has been discussing too. They're, they're in the process of reviewing the downtown design standards code and that's one of the major topics that they were discussing of, of whether that should be, uh, removed or, uh, revised.
Oh, thank you.
Sal?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First of all, Heather, um, and Chuck, both of you guys, great job on the presentation and I appreciate your work in, um, moving this forward. I remember asking about this and as did several members of the council a year ago. So I'm glad that, that this has really been moving forward and you've done such a good job. I had a question about the, um, the appendices, some information in the appendices, the, um, uh, the, I think it's appendix five that where you, where you have the information on the, um, on the actual details of what each of these plans would, uh, result in from a policy standpoint, like raising the, uh, raising the, uh, the height or reducing the size of buildings. And, uh, on, uh, page, oh, these pages aren't numbered. But on one of the pages, there's a section in there on McMinnville's Central City Housing Study, Sensitivity Testing of Possible New Zone Standards, Prototype B Standalone Residential on Half Block for Rent. And so there's a chart in there where you have B1, Existing Policy, 24 Homes, B2, Reduced Parking, 36 Homes, B3, Maximum Height, 56 Homes, B4, Smaller Homes, um, 66 Homes. And I guess I just have a couple of general observations about that, assuming that that sort of articulates the direction that we could go one, one way or the other. The first is that, uh, I think anything we do to increase density is, is going to have an impact on, on parking and we just need to, from a policy standpoint, decide whether we want affordable housing in a density of, you know, 50 to 60, uh, units in that type of a space or not. Um, and if we want affordable housing, I think we need to do that. I would encourage both raising the height and considering smaller homes. And I would note that that change with the smaller homes seemed to be the only one that dropped the, um, dropped the income level requirements below $80,000 for, for a family, um, 80% of the adjusted, um, median income for the region. And so I, I think that the staff should, uh, keep a lot of these options on the table for the city center, uh, including increasing the height and increasing the, um, smaller homes. And then the other thing I'd point out is that we did do a parking study, um, preceding this a couple of years ago. And my recollection was that the parking issues downtown were primarily localized around Third Street, but much less of a problem as you moved off of Third. So, um, just those comments and, um, again, thanks for your, for your work.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just pulled it up on the screen so other councillors can look at it in detail if, if you want to pull it up afterwards. It's, it's appendix E. Um, and this was some of the findings, summary of the findings from the pro forma analysis. There's more detailed sheets for each one of these, B1, B2, B3. I will note, I think B4 included an even further reduction in parking beyond one, one parking space per unit, um, which allowed for more homes to be on, uh, the property. But yeah, um, and, uh, yeah, there's, there's more detailed sheets in here if, if you're interested in getting into those details.
Thanks Chuck. And I guess I would just say on the parking issue, it doesn't make sense to me to have a higher standard for parking for multifamily, larger multifamily than for smaller. So if the current code is 1.5, uh, and, uh, and, and the movement is towards one, then I think we should be moving towards one. And, and if there's, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable not requiring at least one parking spot per structure, but, um, you know, I, I definitely think that, that movement in that direction to make housing more affordable seems like it's going to make sense in the city center.
Yeah. And, and councillor, one of the things you point out, so another project that we're working with right now, um, is the apartment complex that burnt down, that had, that had the fire between Adams and Baker last year. Um, and they are looking at wanting to put, um, micro units in there, which, which has a, um, purpose niche in the market today, especially with, um, boomers at, who are retiring and also millennials coming into the marketplace. Um, and our density standards won't allow it. So interestingly, our high density zone, which is meant to allow high density housing, actually because of the way it's written, caps the amount of density you can put on a site, um, in terms of the number of units within a form. The form could be the same size and have 12 units in it, or it could be, you know, have 31 units in it, but our code requires it to be relative to the size of the form, not the size of the unit inside. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at as well.
Thanks Heather.
And with the, um, reduced parking standard, that's a, that's a recommended action. You know, there's a lot of different things we can look at in terms of how that exactly gets applied. You know, um, the recommendation is potentially to go to one per unit, but, you know, we could look at basing that by bedroom, uh, looking at different locations that might have different standards just based on their physical traits. Um, you know, at least looking at things like a one bedroom wouldn't require more than one parking space or something like that.
Do you have the ability to apply different standards to the same kind of zone? So if everything's like an R4 zone now because of, um, Senate Bill 2001, can you say, okay, in this city center zone, we're going to have this parking standard of such and such? And then in this adjacent zone, we're going to have a slightly different one because we think that the traffic impacts are going to be less, like a, a lower standard, for example. So, you know, for example, it may be less of an issue to have less parking someplace where there's, where their parking is less impacted, like closer to Third Street. Maybe the further you get away from Third Street or the, you know, the, the, that you can have a different standard even within the city core. So two different standards in that area.
Yeah, we, we can do it based on zoning. Uh, the, the state law that passed for missing middle, um, is particular to housing type regardless of zone, which wherever you have a single family dwelling unit allowed. So we can't do it for the missing middle housing types. But we do, if you recall with the UGB amendment, we did adopt an R5 zone. The R5 zone does not have any single family housing allowed in it. So there's an opportunity to rezone some areas into R5 and then, um, look at higher density housing applications there.
Yeah, and we could look at, you know, locational factors too. It's kind of similar to our existing code, which has zero parking right on the downtown core and then a half reduction, you know, as you get further from downtown. So we could, you know, there's lots of different ways we could approach it and different things we could analyze as we're looking at exactly how we might want to reduce the off-street parking requirements.
Council President Drabkin, I saw your hand up. Do you still have a question?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was in response to something a while ago and I think it's been well covered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, any questions from councillors, uh, to, uh, the planning staff? Okay. Great discussion, great work as, that has, as has been already mentioned, lot of hours, lot of, uh, really vested individuals have put time, effort and thought into this. And so again, we have as much material at our disposal as you would really want. And, uh, so that's there. Uh, and again, staff can be able to answer any questions as we move to that, uh, May 11th meeting. Any other thoughts before we conclude our meeting this evening? It has been, uh, uh, two and a half hours, well worth our time. I think we've gotten some really good information tonight that needs to come before us and, uh, and learnings from the municipal corps. So with that being said, thank you for your attendance and have a great evening, everyone. Be safe.